Just a little bit behind to get some new information added. We'll go ahead and get started here to my right. Y'all still good? To my left, you're good. Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to the Blackwood Town Council Special Call Meeting Budget Workshop this afternoon. Today is Wednesday, March the fifth, twenty twenty-five. The time now is five fifty-one P. M. Ms. Durst, would you please call the roll, ma'am?
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Page.
Here.
Councilman Brock.
Here.
Councilwoman Britt.
Here.
Councilman McHenry.
Here.
Mayor Griffin.
Here. Thank you, ma'am. Was notification and posting of the meeting posted according to state law?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, please join Councilwoman Britt for the pledge of allegiance in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you all please bow your head? Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to come here today to conduct the business of the town of Blackwood. We ask that this meeting be productive, Lord God, and we just ask that you bless those that are here. And Father, as we leave this evening, we ask that you also bless each of us as we go to our respective homes or other places. In Christ's name, amen.
Thank you, ma'am, for the pledge and the prayer this evening. Before we move, as we move into the discussion item this afternoon, we have one item with two subcategories to it. Item A under discussion items tonight, and the general purpose of this meeting is to review the physical, this current fiscal year, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, the F Y twenty-five budget. Here shortly, we'll have some brief presentations, maybe some questions from members of council for department heads. And we will have a brief presentation by those present this afternoon. And then we will have a F Y twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget review by our finance director, Ms. Julie Emery. And council members at that time will be able to ask questions. Before we get started with the first one, council has packets. And for the ones watching on YouTube, we are still working on it. We're going to get to that point one day where we can show these things live as we go through them on YouTube. If anyone at home wants copies of these, please notify Town Hall and we will get you copies of this presentation tonight and any of the budget items that we review and talk about this afternoon. These documents belong to you. You are the taxpayers. These are documents you pay for each and every day. Before I call up the first presentation, I just want to ask council, as we move through this, working with the department heads, this may be a process that's somewhat new to them. I ask respectfully that each member here, please be respectful to these members, these staff and department heads this afternoon. If they do not have an answer to your question, as we have been prepping, prepping and talking about in preparation for this night, this evening, they will, and I'm going to say it again, they will get back with you with those answers ASAP. You asked and we want to make sure that we give you those answers, but we don't want them feeling somewhat afraid if they don't have those answers. Okay. Oh, thank you, sir. First presentation this afternoon will be from our finance department. Ms. Julie Emery, or do you want to wait until you do budget? Okay, cool. All right. Some of, and I'll go through this if you don't mind, ma'am, just so that council for true transparency. Some of these expenditures from the finance department, from our finance director, is salaries, medical, health insurance, retirement and continuing education. Some of the accomplishments is, is actually keeping up with the job. The high demand in that department as we continue to grow here in Blackwood. Some of the honorable mentions, and we're not here to discuss the F Y twenty-five, twenty-six budget, but I asked each department just to put some honorable mentions and goals ahead of the March the twenty-seventh budget workshop for F Y twenty-five, twenty-six. Finance Department, one of their goals, just keep in mind, and you'll see this again on the twenty-seventh, is the need for additional staff and then continuing education time. I'll pause at this time just to administration. I know from the administration side, our top priority right now is finding a town administrator. And we hopefully will have some updates for you all and the general public soon. I will pause, Mr. Stein is our current town administrator. Do you have any mentions that you want to add to this this evening?
No, sir, I do not.
All right. Thank you, sir. Our marketing department, Ms. Jordan.
Hey, how are you guys? All right, so I started with expenditures. So our biggest was merchandise and we still have plenty of it, so it will probably also roll over into the next year. That was about eleven thousand. Ads was our next biggest one, or not biggest one, but those are going to grow once we advertise for Juneteenth and July fourth as well. And then we also have the Key to the City from July fourth in there. And it's not up there. I don't know if it's exactly in the marketing budget, but the website updates was about four to five thousand if I'm right, Julie? Line, another line item. Okay. Next slide.
Ms. Jordan.
Yes.
So that we can follow, Ms. Emery, what section of the budget, and can you give us line items as to where she's referencing? Because I'm trying to. Can you say that one more time? Forty-one, twenty-three, seventy-one? All right, that's on page three of six. Okay, thank you.
All right, so next up, we have accomplishments for the marketing department. The professional camera has been really great. It's got a great zoom ability. We've been able to get some really good photos. And with that also, Adobe Creative Suite has been great. We've been getting a lot of more interaction on social media with postings of those photos and videos using that software. The A V system here has also made live streams run more efficiently. And then, of course, advertising more frequently on social media platforms has gained more followers, traction, and that kind of stuff. So next up, I just kind of broke down some things from the social media platforms. Facebook reach has increased by about a hundred and thirty percent. Instagram reach has increased by about a hundred and seventy-one percent. Both content interactions for both Facebook and Instagram have increased about a hundred percent. Link clicks have also increased. The only thing on here that's decreased is the visits on Facebook, and that's just the page itself. And then our followers have also increased. I'd like to highlight Instagram has increased over seven hundred percent, which is really great. Our Facebook has a lot of followers, but we're still growing our Instagram, and then the views are on there as well. Excellent. YouTube has also increased in the views, watch time and subscribers. And keep in mind, all of these are based on last year, the full year, and this year so far. So there is still time for it to increase even more as we, as we wrap up the year in June. And then you've got Twitter. You have to pay for, to get analytics. So that's not something we pay for, but our current number of followers on there is a hundred and three. And then here I just have some geographic stats and age and gender. Obviously, the top is Blackwood, which makes the most sense. And then Pontiac, Columbia, follow, and one to three percent is a bunch of different surrounding areas. For age and gender, Facebook in general usually attracts an older crowd. So you've got slightly older there with Instagram slightly younger, about the same percentage of female and male for both. And then YouTube is kind of different. You've got mostly males watching and fifteen percent females. Next. So some of the goals I have for the upcoming year is to begin training via Coursera programs. Analytics for social media and Google is forever changing. So I'd like to use Coursera. It's about four hundred dollars a year. They have digital analytics programs, S E O programs, tons of different things. And also, of course, looking for local training, continuing with M A S C's Main Street. And then obviously continuing to gain traction and maintaining our numbers and growing our numbers for followers and subscribers on all the platforms. And then something I didn't add on here, but I've thought a little more about, some maybe low-cost community things. I know recently we've had a lot of people inquire about the litter in the town. So we've been thinking about doing some community service opportunities. And I know the mayor's also, you know, come up with some ideas that staff could also participate in. So that is pretty much all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Jordan, for the detailed presentation. Any questions for members of council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Mayor Proton Brock.
Jordan, I'm looking at your social reach, or the town's social reach. And there's no question that we should have a presence on Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, X, formerly known as Twitter. I don't understand it, so that doesn't carry much weight with me. Maybe TikTok, if it manages to survive. But what is, what is our goal with our social reach?
Yeah, so.
What are we promoting?
We're promoting our events, our own events, as well as community events. And then, you know, we're also hoping to promote, you know, the mayor has themes and initiatives this year. So for example, January's theme was health and fitness, so just some ideas on how you can do that. And obviously, you know, giving updates on Scout, giving updates on road progress. A lot of the posts lately have been about the soccer field updates, so I've been taking videos and photos of the workers, you know, in action, and then also just over time, the building changing.
Do we still have our monthly newsletter that goes out via email?
Yes, we do. Yes, that also goes out.
This is just an enhancement of that.
Yes.
One last question. For Facebook, Instagram ads, it says positions and events. That's strictly town-related, right? We're not advertising other businesses or other.
Correct. Any, any paid advertisements or just our, our stuff? Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor Proton Brock. Any, Mr. Councilman McHenry.
Thank you, Jordan. I appreciate your report. Sorry. I appreciate that report. Question for you, in the current budget, do you think the balance of what is left, which is probably a little less than a thousand dollars, is that going to get you where you need to be? And are you going to stay within that on the marketing side?
Yeah, I, I believe so. Again, we don't have to buy any more merch right now. That will roll over too. So we'll have even more next year to focus more on events. But it'll really be Juneteenth and July fourth that we'll be advertising for, and I think that's plenty for that time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilman McHenry.
But, but those will also, Juneteenth will go under the Juneteenth event and the other, so it won't come out of that marketing line.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, no problem.
And just one last thing, just, just to clarify, just for clarification, the merchandise that you buy, it's, it's generic, right? It's not like dated with years or anything like that?
No, it's, it's just the town of Blackwood logo. And we bring it, we set it up for Movies in the Park. We're going to have it at Rib Fest. Anyone that comes in, we've got a flyer now that says, if you follow us, you can get a free item. So it's all, it's all generic, yes.
Yep, okay.
Thank you, ma'am. And also to, just to add, if you, next time, members of council, you stop in Town Hall, when you walk in the door, you'll see the ladder shelving with all the merch that's available for the town, to include crayons and coloring books. All right, next on the presentation is the maintenance department, known as Public Works.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Filling in for Jason. His wife had surgery, so if you keep him and his family in prayers, thoughts. Where do y'all want me to begin? I got some notes here. Y'all got any questions to start off with?
I know maybe Jason in the slides, so if you want to follow the slide.
I got, I got that. Right now, shop we're renting, basically paying about twenty-four thousand a year. My thoughts on that is if we had that piece of land over there cleared and build a shop, we could easily pay for a shop with the amount of money we're paying in rent. That's just my thoughts. On that. The ponds, we've got two ponds now, where we had one, so we're having to pay, is it double now, Julie?
It's almost double what it was.
What we had, so.
Budget will go over this year, because he didn't start that until January, doing the second pond.
What do we do with the ponds?
Say that again.
What do we do in the ponds?
They have to keep them fertilized. They put dye in this one to keep it clean, because if you don't, you're going to get moss and sludge. That one had it real bad. And once we put that in there, it cleaned it up. But that's basically what they're doing. And then they also have to fix the, the light out here. And the, they had to come do something with the sprinkler. I don't, is it up working yet, Fred? Sprinkler? Did they ever get it working? Yeah. No, in the pond.
The fountain.
The fountain.
It's still, okay. So that's, that's another thing that they do there. Irrigation, we've had a lot of problems, busted pipes, heads. And I know Daniel's harped on it with us about the expenses costing. We may need to move some money from somewhere to cover that cost in the future. Talked to Brock today, one of the guys that comes out, and he basically said some of the stuff that was done, some of the pipes that were, that were made ten, fifteen years ago, they had some problems with some of them. And he thinks that could be some of the problems that we're having here. And so we spent a lot of money on, on repairs on the irrigation. So that's, now we've got more irrigation over here, so it may be another expense to keep that up with, you know, mowing and busting heads and stuff like that. And then as far as the R C S D, me and Julie noticed the other day, that's the Risen County Sheriff's Department, and we have not paid them anything since June of last year. So we're not sure if they're even coming in here. They hadn't sent us a bill. So we don't even know if they're coming in here at night. Like originally, I think we were paying on.
Just fifty-five dollars.
Fifty, yeah, fifty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty bucks. But we're not even sure if anybody's coming in here at night, at night to look, to go through the park. And right now, we've had a lot of problems with the cameras, so we don't know who's coming in here and who's not. And the biggest problem, and another problem we've got right now is the gates. We've, we have fought this gate problem for as long as I've been here, four years plus. And we just cannot get anybody out here to give us a concrete answer. The company that we use, Eli, they've been out here, gosh, numerous times. And right now, gates are still offline, I think. So that's another problem we need to have addressed and fixed. On that.
Next, next slide is your accomplishments. Can you talk a little bit about the accomplishments?
Yeah, playgrounds. You know, we did the shades, got into turf put in. I think that's been a big hit, doing the turf. You know, I think in the long run, it'll save us money not hauling that mulch in there that we put in there, the shavings. Up on seventy-seven, once y'all approved the tractor, which was, appreciate that again. We've been able to go up there with mulch, have it brought in, and go through each tree, spray them down, keep the weeds out, and this, this still looks pretty good from last year when we done it. Need to go back and freshen them up again, but, and we cut all the trees. They were just like draped down. And previous administrator, he didn't like cutting some of the trees, but we went and done it. Looks a whole lot better than them laying on the ground, Liam, so. Flower beds, we really hadn't been able to do a lot up there at the interstate, because we didn't have irrigation, because it's been out. It's up and going now, I think, this, for the summer. So I'd like to get back in there and do that. We've done different themes during the holidays, and we just hadn't done it, because we hadn't had any irrigation. The restoration of Town Hall, I think that's a project that everybody should be proud of. I mean, Town Hall, I think, is really nice now, especially outside, inside, take care of some of the mold problems, which y'all all previewed that, I'm sure. So me personally, I'm proud of that. It looks good for the community. I mean, for us to take that house and keep it up old as it is. And appreciate Daniel doing what he did to get the people in there too, doing that. And then we've had to go back on the asphalt, a lot of places on the trail, where that money was spent there for re-asphalting, where everything, trees are bucking up. The roots were bucking up, different areas. They dug them out. And the company has done it both times. They've done a good job, keep people from tripping, that kind of stuff. On that. That's pretty much.
Next slide is just briefly, not, not full detail. We'll go into the full detail in the twenty, March twenty-seventh.
That's fine.
Workshop, but just hit, you know, those items that is some of the goals for next.
Well, my main goal for the last two years is to get that amphitheater painted. Get it redone. Needs to be grinded down to the original concrete and just poly it, just to make it look better. I've got two, two bids right now. Waiting on one more. I'd really love to have that done before July fourth. That's my main pet peeve. I want to get that done. I know we've talked about side and amphitheater field, putting in new irrigation over there. That would be a very nice addition to the park. And like I said, the new office space, that's just kind of what I was talking about earlier. Then back to the flower beds again. Now we should be able to do that. One of the biggest problems is keeping the town clean. I mean, you can go to the interstate. I can go up there right now, pick up everything up there, and to be places that you think nobody's been. I mean, people are just, our town's litter, we need to put in a project litter and just, you know, see if we can get people just to be more responsible with that. Another one of my pet peeves, I'd love to get a new piece of playground equipment. I've, Doc said something to Sloan and to Daniel about it. I have people come up to me and ask me out in public, are y'all going to put, ever going to put a new piece of equipment in? And if we can get the money to do it, that would be a good improvement to the playground. Maybe just like a rock climbing thing for smaller kids or something. Far as, I went over the gates. The litter. Far as, um, I went over the gates, um, the litter. And then, maybe if we could get a part-time person, maybe I, y'all could put that in the budget to get a part-time person, one or two, to come in, a few hours a week to help, maybe they could do some of that with littering, because once summer starts, we're gonna be tied up with all this grass in here, and we're kinda stretched thin at certain times of the year. In winter months, not as much as the summer months. But, uh, that's just something to think about there. And, uh, we had talked about getting, we really need a new, new more, I mean, we need two more's. And we've talked about that too, so. Other than that, that's about it, and if y'all have any questions, we're glad to answer your questions.
Excuse me, thank you, sir, for your, um, presentation this evening. It doesn't go unnoticed what each and every one of you do. There's three of you that, um, do, do your best to keep the town, um, beautiful at all times. I'll pause for a moment, um, for members of council, do you have any questions? And, um, just any questions for our Public Works? Here none, if you do, just email, um, email us, and we'll, we'll get your questions answered. So, um, Jason, we're praying for him and his family.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question, if I may?
Um, um, Councilwoman Kendrick.
Um, I appreciate that report, and certainly appreciate everything the Public Works team does, keep, it's a lot, keep everything looking nice. When, um, you're talking about the cameras and the issues with the cameras, where, who does that fall under, track that down?
Well, we all.
You, you want me to explain?
Yeah, you can.
So, right now, the cameras for the park, we've got a certain number down because of the project here.
That we gotta go on.
And Fairfield Electric had to come in and, uh, take, uh, several light poles, if you remember, the pedestrian decorative lighting offline, 'cause we're reconfiguring this, so they had to pull that power source. So the cameras are down, we're expecting, I reached out to the contractor today, he's thinking somewhere the first of April of those going back in, which would then bring those cameras back online. So it's a temporary thing as far as the park's surveillance, uh, goes. 'Cause outside of that, we do have, I think, a total of sixty-seven cameras in this park. So it's well covered when they're up, but it's, you know, this project right now is the hundreds.
And you will have one go out every so often, I mean, something's, you know, they're just not ever gonna work all the time, I mean, you're gonna have that issue. And one other thing I'd like to just mention, I mean, y'all live here, y'all know this town's growing like crazy. I mean, and that's, and the more it grows, the more we're gonna have to be involved with stuff, as a council, as y'all as a council, and then us as workers for the town. I mean, and, you know, so keep that in mind, I mean, I know y'all do, I mean, it's unbelievable the amount of traffic we have now, and housing development's going up, and, so.
And, and then the same thing, the gates, is that still the, the wifi signal, the wiring issue?
It's a kind of an all of the above. We've had asset technology, the new I T provider, they're looking at putting in new beaming devices to increase the frequency, but it also seems to be, um, sequestered to the type of gate, um, operating system that was installed originally. It's, it's been kinda referenced as the, as the lowest, lowest bid kinda situation. It was a, uh, experimental operating system, we were told, or at least this was what was told to me by the previous administration. And I think as a result, we're just having a lot of, uh, experiential issues, uh, as a result of that. And I know, I know it's not a, not a good answer, but myself, Ronnie and Jason, we have talked about, it may be that quotes be garnered by a new gate company to replace the operating system, not necessarily the aluminum gates that swing open and close, but change out the operating system, put a new mechanism in place. 'Cause for example, this gate down here is a slider, chain, a, a chain drive slider gate. We have had next to no issues with that gate. But the ones out here at Langford and, um, Sanford have been continuous problems since the day they were installed. And it seems to be operating system errors, uh, falling offline, losing time and code, all kinds of things.
And the company that put those in, they admitted that's the first time they've ever used this type of gate up here. And we, you know, we even had a guy, two years ago, come in from Atlanta, when the gate company, and we thought, hey, this is gonna, you know, he'll get this straightened out. He's like, I don't know what to tell you. And he left, went back to Atlanta. He was there like maybe thirty minutes, and we were just sitting there scratching our heads, like, well, what are y'all gonna do? And he said, we'll, we'll get it going, and we've had numerous meetings with him, either when Carol was here, and it just still, just, we just do, constantly have problems with them. And I don't know if that's something we need to address, like you said, maybe putting in new gates again up here and over there.
I'm sorry, thank you, um, how much were those gates, I mean, like, if they were experimental?
Well, you got a grant for one, I, Julie, ob- obviously this was in the prior administration, but I wanna say it was something in the tune of two hundred and some thousand for each. Am I, am I, am I right in that?
Um, and so, do we have any of the paperwork, or any kind of, was there, like, any kind of, um, service agreement? Or anything in there with language with regards to, perhaps, I mean, there's been communications and?
They, they had a limited warranty period, but that's obviously all been expired, now these, this is what now, three, three years ago now?
Yeah, well, and I'm just thinking, if it was a problem from the get, you know, I mean, we have an attorney, I mean, you know, I mean, as far as filing a complaint and whatnot, you know, um, but, I mean, that's a lot of money, you know?
Correct.
Even if it was a grant, I mean, it's still, that's a lot of money, um, and, but anyhow, um, I know y'all've been around the bend, it sounds like, with regards to talking about it and exhausting and whatnot, so, I'm just trying to figure out some other means of getting it to operate.
I mean, for the future, I mean, I, we really need to do something, I mean, whether it's put, go back to them, you know, put pressure on them, or just, I mean, I don't know, it just hasn't worked, I mean, they've been at this gate over here, what, two or three times this year, they've had to come back and reset it, and each time it just falls right back down, so.
Two gates.
How many times, Julie?
We had two gates, the original back in May of twenty-one, it was nineteen thousand dollars, I would say twenty. But that was only two gates at the time, I'm trying to pull this stuff up.
So, so, um, Councilwoman, I've seen you with your hand. Oh, okay, sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Kendrick.
Just to follow up too, you mentioned the irrigation issues, both in the park, do we have irrigation at I seventy-seven ounce?
We do.
And it, it, there's issues with it?
It's working now.
It is working?
It's helping working, yes.
Okay.
And the biggest problem we've had out there right now is the construction going on with Scout. They've hit lines, cut lines, just like, you know, they've cut other stuff up there, but right now it's working, and hopefully, soon that will, issue will be resolved, but when it's working, it works real well.
Mr. Mayor. I'm Mayor Portunbro. Hey, Ronnie, so, a couple of things.
Yes, sir.
Number one, the amphitheater sod is actually in the current year's budget. It's budgeted for about a hundred and a little over a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. I would suspect though, that it would probably cost more than whatever bid we had, was probably null and void at this point. Could be my guess. We'd have to rebid it potentially.
Yeah, we, we got a formal quote from a vendor who has done previous work, uh, but it has not been formally bid through R F P.
Alright, so, there is some money there, and if you don't spend it, the, the one thing about a budget is everybody thinks, oh, you budget money to do this, then the money's gone. Now, if you don't spend it, it just, it just exists. So, um, I'm not necessarily saying we're gonna roll the same amount of money over for it, but, you know, there was money allocated, and it, it, you know, it'll, it'll still be there. Um, you, you, I don't wanna get too far into the twenty twenty-six budget, but you've got new office space. Is there any way to incorporate some office space in the new restroom facility in Spilestuck Field?
No, sir, it's nowhere near big enough.
Okay.
'Cause I walked in there the other day just to see what that looked like in there, no, there's no way.
Is it just storage?
Yes.
Is it mostly storage?
Storage, yes, yes.
And restrooms? Okay.
And that'd be referenced as needed storage.
Is what?
I said, and it's referenced as needed, much needed storage.
Yes.
So just, just as a point of reference for that, um, when you and I, um, were elected, re-elected, um, that was one of the first things I asked about, could we do a change order for that to add office space? And I know at that time, it was what, Mr. Stein, somewhere like fifty grand to do a change order to the actual construction documents to add office space over there, but also to, at the same time, uh, the park needed storage space as well, so. A little bit conflicted there, but, uh, we'll continue to work on that, we don't wanna get too much in the F Y twenty-five, twenty-six.
Gotcha.
But we'll work on that, 'cause we, we have those issues as well.
For what it's worth, I will say that I've asked Rick McMackin with Land Plan South as it relates to the budget, or the, uh, maintenance workshop, and I've given him the tax map number for the, what I call the hill-shaped property we purchased last year.
With two trailers on it?
Uh, well, B A R wouldn't allow that, but to give us, oh, yes, the one with two tra- I'm sorry, yes, the one with the two trailers on it.
Two junky trailers, have they been removed?
No, they're still there.
We've not done anything with it.
Well, then I guess the bar's allowing it.
No, no, I thought you were gonna say put two, I, I, I heard you say put two trailers, but, anyway, he is looking at that parcel to give us a quote on building a maintenance shop and what that would look like. And I gave him some parameters based on what they have now, and then our discussions of what they would need as extras. So basically, two, three bay enclosed with a little office space, and then a series of, uh, four or five lean-to bays for dry storage inside of a compound. So he is running those numbers, I will make sure Jason or Ronnie, one of them, have contact with Rick if he didn't have those numbers together for budget planning this year. So, for what that's worth, you will have some formal numbers on that.
And there again with that, I mean, I, in the long run, I mean, I just think it would save the town a lot of money, you know? If it was done in the next few years and not, we not pay that rent for ten years down the road, I mean, we'd easily pay for a pole building for a office easily.
Yes, sir. So, any other questions for Maintenance, Public Works? Here none, thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Up next is Mr. Kirk Wilson with Building and Zoning.
Good evening, Council, thank y'all for giving us the opportunity today. Um, fortunately, building and zoning, we're, we're not out here spending a lot of money. Um, we, we, we are taking in a lot of money, um, so, you know, expenditures, my salary, um, R C I, who's our third party, building official, planner viewer, inspectors, um, all of the above. And, um, we had a meeting at Scout, uh, last week, Brent and I, and, um, uh, Scott Ash, who was doing the paint shop, uh, spoke very highly of our inspectors out in the field, as well as our, uh, turnaround time on our plan reviews. So I wanted to make sure that I gave kudos to R C I and their staff. Brian and Brent are always available, literally any time of the day, and, um, you know, I've, I've worked closely with them on a daily basis to, uh, kinda keep things moving in the building department. So, but, uh, yeah, and then, uh, just continuing education, um, you know, I'll be going to the, uh, uh, Community Development Association, which I'm a member of, go in the spring conference, and then in the fall. And then in May, uh, there is a SCAPA conference, uh, South Carolina Planners Association, um, that, uh, typically it's a day conference, I think it's two days this year, but, um, so I'll be looking to go to that in, um, April or May, um, of this year, so. Yeah, I also wanted to mention too, uh, Brian, uh, and his team won South Carolina Building Official of the Year, um, that was back in July. And, uh, Brian and his team collectively, um, have more experience of any other similar business, um, you know, inspections, plan reviews, uh, than anybody else in the southeast. So, uh, again, Brian and his team, R C I, Brent, um, they're, uh, exceptionally, they're doing exceptionally good work. And, um, you know, Brian actually started, uh, two months before I got here in May of twenty thirteen. So we kinda started along the, the same time, and, um, you know, they've been with us ever since, and certainly enjoy, um, that, uh, partnership that we have with them. Uh, goals, one of the main goals, it, it just kinda, uh, Brent and I have been talking, um, a lot recently. We would like to change our fee schedule to bring in more permit revenue. Currently, the fee schedule, um, in our ordinance states that, um, the permit is based off of the contract value. We need to get a little more up with the times, especially with the massive Scout project going on. And we would, uh, like to change that to a building valuation chart, which is kind of a standard across the industry. And it basically breaks it down into, uh, square footage and the cost of construction, whether it be residential or commercial. And with our new software, Evolve, new-ish, I guess we've had it since last February, um, they have already built that mechanism into the backend, and we've just got to come with the text amendment, which we hope to come, uh, here in the next month or two, um, to make that change. And again, what that will do is, that will basically, um, the permit costs will be based off of what the current valuation of that, uh, building is, based on square footage and current construction trends. Uh, yeah, uh, that's basically it, um, but I'm happy to answer any questions, um, that, uh, anybody may have, and thank you for the time.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, for that, um, any questions from members of council to my left?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Councilman Kendrick.
Uh, Kirk, with the, uh, additional building, continuing building that's going on on the Scout property, what percentage of your time do you spend on Scout-related projects versus Town-related?
That's a great question, um, and I'd like to follow up to that as well. It, it has ebbed and flowed, um, since the project started. However, in the last couple of months, um, it has really picked up, and, um, of course, I'm, I'm ballparking here, but, um, I would say that, um, probably fifty to sixty percent of my time right now is spent on Scout. You know, and, and to, to follow up to that, um, as Ronnie mentioned, I mean, Blythewood, we've got a lot of development, and a lot of people knocking on doors, and, you know, sniffing and fishing around various properties. You know, in addition to those duties, I'm also board, or secretary, uh, for three boards and commissions, the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Planning Commission, and the Board of Architectural Review. And, I know other municipalities that are larger, uh, have project managers, so to speak, uh, for certain things. And, um, we have four new buildings coming onto the Scout site that are currently under review. Uh, those four buildings are gonna total about roughly three point two million square feet. And that was the part of our meeting that Brent and I had on site there, uh, last week. But, um, I, um, I, I do think that, um, you know, the building and zoning department is only me right now, uh, in the office, obviously we have Brian and Brent and his team, but, um, I think we are approaching, um, to where, you know, I, I could possibly use an additional, uh, individual in that department. You know, on top of the Scout stuff, I'd say I'm averaging probably twenty calls a day. And, uh, a lot of it is zoning questions, um, property development questions, um, you know, really, I mean, you, you name it, it, it's, it's coming through the pipeline. So, you know, do I need somebody tomorrow in, in that department to help? No, but, um, again, it's, it's, quickly, it's, um, you know, the, the work is kinda stacking up. And, um, you know, it, to be quite honest, I, I've noticed myself making more errors, small errors in the boards, uh, and commissions aspect. small errors in the boards, uh, and commissions aspect of it. Um, again, nothing major, but, you know, uh, grammatical errors, wrong, you know, a, a, a fat, fat thumb syndrome with, you know, a wrong date here or there, and, um, obviously, we're all gonna make mistakes. But, um, you know, I, I kinda like to think that my head is all over the place, and, and some of those things are, are kind of falling through the cracks. And, uh, you know, on top of that, you know, I can, I need to be better in, in certain areas. We're all trying to always improve, um, you know, in, in, in areas. But, um, again, it's, um, it, it's picking up, and, um, you know, it's an exciting time. Um, but, uh, you know, I, I do think within the next year or two that, uh, we, we may need an additional, uh, help, uh, in the, in the building, zoning, and, and planning department, so. Did that, did that answer your question, uh, Councilman?
It does, thank you.
Okay, yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Mcindry. Any other questions from members of council? All right, thank you, Mr. Wilson. Here or none? Thank you.
Thank you for y'all's time, appreciate it, thank you.
And our final presentation this evening from departments will come from Doco Manor. Our director, Mr. Fred Layman.
Hey, everybody, thank you so much. It's great to be here. Um, I, uh, I'd like to just thank Daniel Steins for all the work he's done for our town. Appreciate it and, and all he's done for my career. Really, he's awesome. Uh, but, uh, Doco Manor expenditures, a lot of this stuff happened before Fred. I kinda work on three calendars. One is the calendar year, one is the before Fred fiscal year of the town, and, and the other is the Fred calendar year, which is pretty much October through September. So, you know, a lot of my numbers, uh, you, you know, I, I show some positivity, you know, with the Fred calendar, and, um, and, and, and are still positive with the, with the fiscal calendar. But I look forward to, you know, the new fiscal budget and being involved in that. Uh, as far as expenditures go, we, we put a new A V system here. It, it's absolutely fantastic. And, um, you know, obviously, Daniel had a lot of input on that, and that was done at the same time I was coming in. There was, uh, money in the budget for an ice machine, and, and it just so happened that, uh, it crapped out on us. So, we had perfect timing and, um, it got a new bu- uh, ice machine in. Uh, we're putting in a new water fountain here. My understanding is that it's been out for several years, and that was in the, the budget before, and, uh, it's coming soon. We, um, we had these outdoor white resin chairs, which are really, uh, uh, beautiful, and they're, they're asked for a lot. You know, the brown chairs are, are not very sellable, resellable. We feel like we can get five dollars a chair for that and pay that back pretty quickly. Again, that was in the before Fred, uh, budget. Uh, active software is something that, um, that I'm implementing now. It's, it's just a fantastic, uh, software system. You know, it, it helps us with, uh, with all kinds of things, and, and, um, I'm looking forward to, you know, being able to see my budget in real time. You know, it's very, you know, luckily, you know, I run my household on, uh, I got three different bank accounts. I see it all in real time. It's real easy for me to, 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 you know, see what my wife's spending, and see what my children are spending, and see what I'm spending. It's hard to do here through our current system, software program called Pitbull. Um, Everbridle marketing is, is tremendous. I mean, we'll, we'll talk more about that as you'll see through my presentation. I've done a couple of decks, and some of it got a little mixed up. I apologize for that. But Everbridle works directly with, with Kim and, and myself, and they're a tremendous mar- marketing, uh, uh, company, and we've switched from wedding wire knot over to the Everbridle system, and it's paying off significantly, and I'll show you that here in a minute. We've, um, we've struggled with blinds. Uh, as you can see, you know, we're, we're gonna put in new blinds, and we're, we got some good estimates for that. That's on me. We, um, we do have, uh, uh, you, you know, when they were broken, so the people that broke them are gonna have to pay for them, you know, or at least through their security deposit. So some of that money will go to those. We'll have new blinds here at the manor.
To add a little context to that, we, the previous, uh, manager had, um, motorized blinds installed, which, great idea, I think in theory, right? But what has happened is everybody who rents it for a wedding thinks they can go over and do something with them manually, and they've literally jerked them down, so he's gonna go back to manual, if I'm not mistaken. I just wanted to add some context to that, but go ahead, Fred, I don't wanna interrupt you.
Yeah, thanks, Daniel. So, um, you know, the accomplishments. We, we did the tree lighting, and we did the, the Christmas parade, which, um, the parade hasn't been done by the town in a decade, I believe, and, you know, kind of a short notice, you know, thrown on our plate, and, and Jordan and the team just did a tremendous job on that. And I think that's a huge accomplishment for our town and, and our team here at Doco Manor. Uh, we also did the tree lighting, which was a huge success and a lot of fun. Uh, those slides were supposed to go in after this. Again, my bad. I, I've, I made too many decks, and they got confused. So that, that's gone, yeah. But go back to that accomplishments again. Thank you, sir. Um, so staffing. So we've made some staffing improvements. And, um, you know, we've all, we've all heard some things about them, but we, we have an unbelievable staff here, and I can't, I can't say enough about Walter and Kim. And I think you guys know, you, you, you know, how dedicated Walter and Kim are to this place and to this town. Uh, I've really never seen anybody that, um, that is so intrinsic, intrinsically motivated, uh, at, at their job. Uh, they've never taken comp time, they've never, you know, they work weekends, nighttime. Anytime, you know, that we need them, they're there for us. Uh, Kim is a, is a very versatile business person. She has, you know, uh, some tremendous business acumen. She's, uh, the assistant to the director, but she is, again, intrinsically motivated, where she, you know, it has marketing background, sales background, um, communications. It, it is phenomenal how much communications comes through this place. You, you, you can't imagine. I mean, it's, it's constant. I'm on the phone and the phone's ringing, and I see John's phone ringing, and, and emails coming all the time. So, you know, she, she manages, you know, a large majority of that. And, you know, as, having those two, it's, it's like a powerhouse team, and they work well together. And they, you know, they also, you know, handle the attendees and so forth. And we'll go into a little bit, um, about that here through the accomplishments. So, um, we went from two full-time people and ten attendees to four full-timers and five quality-trained, experienced, and systems-focused attendees. So, you know, our attendees, you, you know, we pick the cream of the crop, we train them correctly. They do a fantastic job, and they offer a great experience, you know, to our clients. If, if I can just give an example, and, and, and trust me when I say, I just pulled out the payroll from last year. So I, I pulled out February first through February fourteenth, and I matched it up against our payroll. And, and last year, it took two hundred and forty-one, two hundred and forty-one hours to operate the manor and the park during the same time period with less bookings than this year, which was a hundred and ninety-one hours. And that's a fifty-hour, part-time swing and an off-peak month. And my off-peak is when, you know, when I got here, there was six events. We had twenty-five February. Um, and as we'll go through here, you'll see that, you know, Doco Manor and Meadow Park booking, October first, twenty twenty-four, is my fiscal start. We had sixty-six bookings through September. And, and that included your town council, your, your B A R, your B Z A, your chamber meetings. And we put in our current staff, our marketing platform, our touring systems. We put all that in place. And, you know, with seven months to go, we, we, you know, if you go to September first, we roughly have two hundred and fifty thousand in revenue coming in. So, you know, literally, we have, um, we had a hundred and fifty-three events. We had, we had, excuse me, we had sixty-six bookings when I got here. And we have a hundred and fifty-three events, which is an increase of eighty-seven events over three months with the current staff. So that's, that's a booking a day. Now, today I booked two. I know Johnna and, and Kim, you know, this week booked about three or four. I mean, it, it's happening all the time. We're, we're, we're running out of dates, you know, and, and really, the, you know, the hardest part about all of this is, you know, someone wants a graduation party Saturday, June sixth, in Room A. Well, I can get five thousand dollars, you know, for Saturday, the sixth, for all of them, you know, for a wedding. But you can't turn them down. I mean, that's just not who we are, and that's not what we do unless we change that policy. Um, so, yeah, so I'm really proud of the accomplishments, you know, with, with, with active network coming in. You know, we'll be able to do things in real time. People will be able to look at a calendar on our website and, and, and make bookings on the website, see what's open, see what's available. We can interact with that counter and say, you know, well, we really don't want you to book, you know, uh, Room A and on, on a, on a premium date and so forth. So, you know, the, the new software will help us, you know, recognize some open dates, some, some dead time. To me, anytime this is open, it's like a perishable tea time. You lose money. I don't like to see it open, you know, I, I'd like to open it at six A M., you know, and keep it open till midnight. So, we're gonna, we're gonna be doing that type of thing, and, you know, it takes some time to, to turn the Titanic, and, you know, to bring the brand around and, and to, to build a team. Uh, and I think we've done a great job with that. So, yes, any questions on that portion?
We'll let you go through your presentation, then we'll open it up for discussion.
Okay, sir, thank you. I, I, um, if you'll move, Daniel, to just the marketing part slide. Next one. Thank you. So, yeah, so, you know, I have a little bit of background, you know, in website marketing, and, you, you know, we hired this company, uh, uh, Wedding Planners Network. And, and really, they didn't have any C, CEO on us, and, and, you know, so we had to go through the, the website a little bit and, and make sure we put some keywords in there, and, you know, and, and start getting some clicks and some, you know, some dings and so forth. Uh, and we feel like, you know, we've accomplished a great deal in a short period of time with them, and we hardly spend anything on them. I think it's about two fifty a month, and they oversee our website. You know, one of the things that we're doing is, is since we have such great visibility there, and we plan on improving it, is we're gonna, you know, highlight some of our vendors, and, you know, they're gonna pay us to come on the, the website on a monthly basis and, and be highlighted and be part of, you know, a, a, a wedding package that they can, they can, you know, people can look at, oh, well, these five are five caterers, and we could look and, you know, price them out and so forth. So, we hope to raise a little revenue there to, to help us spend more money in marketing, cause marketing is, is ridiculously expensive, and it's, it's, it's a very competitive market that we're in. Um, I think that, you know, there's, there's seventy different venues within twenty-five miles of us. So, you know, we're constantly trying to outdo the other one. Everbridle, and it's not up there, but this is kind of the way they look at their slides. And, you know, they look at, obviously, the, the total revenue that we could've had, but they brought in forty-two thousand dollars, so they've definitely paid for themselves. And we just traded them out for wedding wire and knot, and I've worked with wedding and wire and knot for, for ten years, for a decade. And we still get wedding and wire and knot emails, but we don't get anybody from them. So, you know, we're sticking with, with what's working, and we think we're doing a good job at it. In fact, I know we're doing a good job at it because we're, we're booking left and right. Um, yes, sir. So the goals. So, you know, the, um, one of the things that, you know, I was really honored and, and, and grateful to, to be selected for this position. And when I was, you know, a lot of my friends and family were excited for me, and also, like, wow, excited for the community. And one of the things that kept coming up on my Facebook is, what are you gonna do with the amphitheater? You know, what can we do with the amphitheater? And, you know, so, some of my goals is, you know, to, to have revenue-generating amphitheater, um, music events or series or festivals or something, and figure out what we can do to bring the amphitheater back to the community and out of the private sector. I, um, you know, I think I'm on the same page as the mayor, as, you know, I, I've done a lot of, uh, 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 you know, uh, wine tastings and, and, and wine parties and jazz festivals, and we have the perfect venue for it right here. And, and, you know, I don't see why we can't do it as a, as Doco Manor, raise money, do revenue, bring people in, showcase the facility at the same time, make a little money, and, um, and, and market it as well. Um, so in-house events, you know, is what I'm, what we're looking at, you know, possibly doing with your permission, obviously. You have New Year's Eve, you know, the nothing really happens around here. You have Super Bowl, Halloween, Saint Patrick's Day, Oktoberfest. Um, we also, you know, we have kids everywhere. I mean, there's kids everywhere around here. We have a, what I call four soccer fields, like one, two, three, and four. And, um, you know, we, we, uh, you know, we sold those out. You know, we, there's, they're under contract for a year before I got here, and we, we get twenty-five dollars an hour for the field. But, you know, uh, uh, imagine you have twenty kids on one field, and you charge them ten dollars a kid, and you keep it in-house. You know, you're making a significant amount of more revenue per hour. So two hundred dollars an hour times four is a lot better than twenty-five dollars an hour times four if we did revenue-generating soccer programs or clinics in-house. The active software can help do that as well. So we can, you know, it's, it's all being put in there as well as, you know, helping us manage the new future. You know, the new park, pavilions and, and, uh, um, you know, uh, the farmer's market and so forth. It can do phenomenal things, and we, we look forward to getting that up and running, and it should be ready, you know, probably first of May. Okay, um, and I think, I think that's it.
Yes, sir. Thank you for that presentation. Um, hold tight, I'm sure members of council will have questions. So I'll look to my left. Any questions of council to my left? Councilwoman Frick.
Fred, I see that you mentioned, um, like Dad's wine cheese pop-up. What is our liability for any form of alcohol out here? Like, we gotta win.
Yeah, yeah, so as long as they're certified bartenders, you know, they have their own insurance, and we're perfectly fine.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple, if I could.
Councilwoman Mcindry.
Fred, thank you for your presentation. I appreciate what you do, what your staff does. It's, doesn't go unnoticed when you're in or around the manor.
Thank you, sir.
They, they tear down, they reset.
I'm very proud of them.
I'm glad we don't pay them by the chair they move. Um, question for you. Of the sixty-six bookings that you had as of October first of twenty-four, do you know how many of those were paid, and when I mean paid, I mean outside events, other than council, planning commission, B Z A?
Um, how many were paid? Half of them. So, so literally, yeah, so literally, uh, uh, we pulled a calendar, you know, Kim pulled a calendar. We put everything on there as of October first through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. And you saw on the calendar, all the B Z A, all the town council, everything there, and then everything else. So figure three a month, so that's thirty-six. We had sixty-six. So there's thirty booked events. And now, we are at, um, well, we were at a hundred and fifty-three, uh, mid-January.
And then your, um, active network, um, how close are you to having that operable?
Um, I think we're closer than they tell me. You know, they're, we're, we're kinda mirroring a, a system that they've already put in place. Uh, there's still these hoops that we go through, like tomorrow, I'm on a four-hour call, you know, and they give you a lot of homework. You know, it's, it's just building like any software. They wanna know, you know, what you're booking. You're booking Room A, Room B, Room C, Room D, Room A, B, C, and D. Where's the conflict? We're booking the amphitheater. You're booking the outside by the lake. You're booking Fields one, two, three, and four. Um, pavilions and so forth. We're trying to look into the future, you know, and make sure that we're set up for anything that we need down the road. Also, they can book, you know, uh, 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 you know, um, soccer clinics if we decide to do that, soccer league. Also, they can book, you know, soccer clinics if we decide to do that, soccer leagues, soccer tournaments. They sign up. We could sell tickets to music events, you know, through that system. And people, again, go to our website and they'll see in real time what's available. We can, yes, sir.
But you think we'll go live with that? So, two-fold question. When will you go live with that? And when will you be able to see your budget in real time in that? And have we already paid the licensing for that? We're just going through the training?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. When he goes live, his revenue and budget reportings will be available immediately. It'll basically just, it's an in-house, it's got an in-house software he'll be able to pull reports from.
Okay. And, I mean, do you know when that'll go live? I'm not holding you to it.
May first.
Oh, so it's in the short run?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, there's, it's basically an eight-week load-up. And again, so we're, it's four hours a week that I meet with my team and with Julie and, you know, and we're building the software. Then they give you homework and you do all these spreadsheets and put it in. But actually, you know, mid-April, we'll be testing it a lot. So, we're hoping that, you know, by then we'll be ready to go.
And then I noticed in your presentation, the printed part, you wanted to reevaluate the fee structure of the manor. When are you looking at doing that? Before active goes live?
At our workshop, you know, I wanted to, you know, I have a larger presentation, you know, I wanted to kind of go through what my thoughts are. And, you know, and it's not really raising the prices here. It's kind of just manipulating how the usage is done. You know, so that we can, we can protect, you know, it's like Masters Week. You get a hotel. You know, it's fifty dollars if you go there this weekend, but if you go Masters Week, it's two fifty. So, our Masters Weeks are May, June, you know, are April, May, and June, and September, October. You know, so we really wanna protect those Saturday nights. Brides are not crazy about getting married on a Friday or Sunday. You know, they wanna get married on a Saturday. And although we still do it, I mean, they're amazing in how they book and they upsell and so forth. But I would like to do graduation parties and make sure that we're connecting with these schools, you know, right here in our backyard. But again, you know, it's at a great cost for us if we're not careful.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman McKendrick. To my right, any questions for Mr. Mayor Pro Tim Brock?
Mr. Layman, at our next budget workshop where we will go into the twenty-twenty-six budget, I'd like to see two things. I'd like to see at least, I'd like to see one report with two parts. I'd like to see a current fiscal year report of the bookings, broken down to paid versus unpaid. And I'd like to see one that projects in the future from July one, twenty-twenty-five through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-six. That'll give us a good idea of the ratio of how many bookings are paid, paid bookings, and how many are gratis. And if, I'm hoping to see that the majority of the gratis bookings, and I'm not saying that we're giving it away for free, are government uses, whether it be boards, town council. And we've had discussions before, and I know Councilman McKendrick can at least attest to this, that we should be paying to use the manor. That punishes you because it takes away opportunities from you when we use it, like a night like tonight. And I don't necessarily believe that if somebody was beating down the door to get in here tonight, but...
We had cheerleaders.
Well, maybe, maybe you did. Maybe they were flipping to get in here. But there's a cost.
Yes, sir.
And it's not fair for your budget to absorb when we're choosing to use the facility. So...
I'd like to have a line item, you know, that, you know, that y'all...
There is a line item, which I just moved twelve thousand dollars a year. That's all we ever do, and I just moved it into...
We might need to change that, obviously.
And that'll be in the budget.
That is woefully shy of the going rate for what we're doing.
Oh, I'm sure it is.
That's just a thousand a month, I mean, for all the meetings. And when that was established, it was like when there was having PC and VZA and all that at the conference room at Hoffman House.
But now they're all here.
Now they're all here.
And that number has not changed.
And y'all talked about it last year.
Yes, I was just gonna say, that was previously done by this council on some of those rates. And so, we'll definitely get the chance to reset that. We don't wanna dive into that conversation tonight.
One more question.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I don't think...
I'm not quite done yet.
Okay, sorry, Brock. We can ping-pong it, Councilman McKendrick.
This Ever Bridal marketing software, what's the ballpark expense for that? Is it a flat rate? Do we pay based on the percentage of bookings?
Ever Bridal's eleven hundred a month.
Eleven hundred a month?
Yes, sir.
And are we generating more than eleven hundred dollars a month in bookings?
Yeah, well, we generate forty-two thousand by there.
Okay. I can't see that.
You don't have that, no.
I want to make that part of the report because they're bringing that up.
Yeah, we can make that part. I didn't put this in because I just got it today. And I wanna make sure that it's for real, you know.
Okay. That's fine. You've got bridal shows. Is that going to bridal shows to...
We did it. We go to a bridal show or two a year, you know, we just wanna be visible there for sure. And, you know, we did, we had the best table. My wife went, I went, you know, Kim and Walt and Johnna managed it, set it up. And it was the most beautiful table there. It was the Columbia Convention Center, you know, downtown. It was really, really spectacular. And of course, anytime that, anything that we do now, you know, like anybody walks in the door, they sign in, they give us their name, their email, their phone number, and we write down what they're looking for and we follow up with them. So, now we have accountability of people coming in. Anybody that went to the bridal show did a QR code, so we know everybody who came through the bridal show. We know who they were. And we also gave discounts to anybody that booked a tour so that we could get some tours. And I thought we did pretty well. I think we got like eleven, you know, tours out of it and a couple bookings. So, it was worth the money.
Okay.
Fred, there's an exchange of what you eliminated on the Wedding Wire and the Knot, what you were paying for those versus event.
Yeah, so the knot was around eight hundred, seven seventy-something, you know, it was about that. But...
A quarter or a month?
A month.
A month.
But the time it took to follow up on them was ridiculous. I mean, we were saving. Ever Bridal gives you that client that's looking at your venue, that's seeing you, that knows of Doco Manor. It's a direct marketing system, you know, through TikTok. They do TikTok, they do Facebook. They do it on their own. And they bring us these clients, where Wedding Wire sends us, sends us all these clients and they send them to seventy other venues around us. So, now we fight over them and we spend a lot of time and we get very little, very little bookings.
I could follow-ups, Fred, if I may. In your report, you went from ten part-time to five more quality part-time that you're using. Can you name those five? I'm putting on the spot.
So, are we asking for personnel names?
Just the names of his part-time.
Everybody is still, all ten of those people are still part of our team, you know, as needed. We didn't fire anybody, you know, they're still part... But we've trained some quality, we found five people that we really like to work with, you know, Heather Klein, Kathy.
Yeah, let's not name, send that email. We'll get that name reported.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Don't wanna put personnel on the spot.
And then, in your marketing efforts, through yours and Kim's marketing efforts, are you using Jordan or relying on Jordan for any help there with the various towns' websites?
All the time. She's, you know, she's a genius at it. She's great.
Thank you. Great report, in my guess.
Thank you, Councilman McKendrick. Mayor Pro Tim, will you finish?
No, well, I'll... Yeah, we'll have a lot more chats.
Yes, sir. I look forward to it.
So, here's what I want, I'm gonna ask council to do so that we, as a staff, get all your questions and concerns about the manor and any other department. Send, well, I'm going, send myself and Julie an email, CC Ms. Durson that email. Again, send myself and Julie, CC Ms. Durson that email with your questions so that we can make sure that we have everything ready for you guys to answer during that meeting. Sounds good. All right, thank you. All right, thank you, sir.
Thanks, everybody.
That concludes our departmental, department head presentations for this evening. I thank each and every one of you for participating. Oh, no, yes, she's gonna do hers in the budget review process. Yep.
Which I will just be sure, Rich, with, I did a new budget today with the FY, February in there, up to date. And as I was going through, I was looking at some numbers and that caught my eye that y'all may ask me about. I saw that under, I wrote some notes, too, forty-one, twenty-three, seventy-five, the outside agency requests. We had budgeted fifty thousand dollars. It's on page three. And we have spent fifty-two, seven fifteen. So, I said, what in the world is going on here? Because Jordan and I had made sure that everyone's paid prior to this end of the fiscal year.
Ms. Emery, I'm sorry, where are you? Page three, what?
Page three, ten, forty-one, twenty-three, seventy-five, the outside fund request.
Oh, you're on...
On the budget budget.
Oh, okay, hold on. Sorry, I was on the roll.
The colorful budget.
Page three.
And the outside fund requests that are there on the bottom.
Is it supposed to have pencil writing on it?
Oh, that must have been mine.
I've got, mine's got writing on it.
Oh, that's fine. Well, you got writing on this one, too.
Okay, I didn't know that was part of the copy.
Here's another one.
Then they had pencil writing, we got your note. That's fine. You can have it back. That's funny.
That's what I was gonna explain to y'all. Couldn't find it. And then I forgot my folder. Hey, we got it right here. We pay, ended up paying the camouflage connection for fiscal year twenty-four, who put on the Juneteenth. At the very end of last fiscal year, we realized that, oh, my God, we had to put it on that Tina Torres wasn't gonna do it anymore. And so Johnny Edwards did it, and we ended up paying fifteen hundred dollars this fiscal year for last fiscal year's Juneteenth, fifteen hundred. So, that's that over. Then the big grab, we paid sixty-two, fifteen for that. We had, we had a twelve, fifteen over, and that was a couple ads for The Voice. And then the rest of it was the Richland County Sheriff's Department. And they went over five thousand on that one. So, it was over by twelve hundred and fifteen dollars. And the only thing we ever provide for the big grab is like porta-potties, but we did not do that last year, and ads and Sheriff Department. And then Fairfield County gets everything else.
So... So, how much did we pay for Big Grab? You said sixty-two, fifteen?
Yes, sir.
And that got us, that got us what?
It, I just said two days of Richland County Sheriff's Department, because they're there at night. You know, because all this stuff is out there and they're out directing traffic in the day. So, it was over three, it was over like three thousand, almost three thousand something one day and two for another, for two days. And then Barbara, I think, was only like four hundred and forty dollars for an ad, maybe two twenty or something for The Voice.
Okay.
I got this somewhere over here, right here. And that was my biggie on the administration.
So, question for you there.
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Mayor Brock, you're gonna have to help me here because I'm just trying to think back to previous years. So, our outside funding...
What page are you on?
I'm on, I'm the same page, three.
Page three.
If a bottom. We take the Richland County Sheriff's Department and the porta-johns that we provide for that big grab out of the five thousand dollars we allocate?
Yes, that's the allocation.
So, in my mind, and somebody help me, but I was under the impression that everything there in blue, that four, forty-two thousand, three hundred fifty dollars, as well as everything on the other side, the sponsorships, were just checks written to these organizations. So, and I know Fair, I think it's Fairfield Chamber.
It's the Chamber that does it.
That that five thousand dollar check would go to Fairfield Chamber to help subsidize the big grab. But we're actually drilling down in that five.
And I can call over there, but when we, when I first got here, so that many years ago, eight hundred dollars, the town put on Big Grab. Not Fairfield, or, you know, they did their thing, we did our thing. And we always paid for the security, porta-johns, and much other stuff, all the ads, everything. And then Fairfield started doing it because we said, we can't do this anymore. So, we tried to get out of the big grab as we tried to get out of the parade, you know, and Transfiguration, you know, all them did it, and Chamber. So, we have always just paid that. I can call, I don't even forget what the name is anymore, at the Chamber, and ask, we're gonna send you five thousand dollars and they're gonna send you the checks. But Richland County has always sent them to us and we've always paid the bills.
So, I, yeah, I think, which is fine. I think in my mind that if we have expenses for the big grab as a town, that would be no different in my mind than an expense for movies in the park or an expense for Fourth of July. That needs to be above, that needs to be above the line.
And to your point, we're still working on some numbers in the budget that you're gonna see. You're gonna see that a little bit different because of some ongoing conversations about Big Grab and, you know, from our standpoint. That was noted and that will be moved. So, it will free up essentially...
And it used to be a town event.
Yep.
So, and we've been, it's a heck for me when we're paying it from one year to the next. And one year it was in hospitality and the next year it's in general fund. And I gotta figure all this stuff out and void checks, you know, when I'm doing stuff.
And I say that only because I'm... We're gonna be looking at a budget amendment for outside funding requests when it was an internal spending issue, not an outside funding request. So, and I'm surprised Daniel's not grinning, but that's gonna be interesting wording to jump through the hoop of the budget amendment.
And this is why we have to be wary where we put some of these things at times.
Right, yeah. And I'm not pointing fingers. I'm just saying, moving forward, as the mayor indicated, there's, we need to keep, we need to make sure we know what we're going and where we're cutting checks to a food bank or to an organization and where we're paying bills because a big grab is going through downtown lately.
And I think, just to that point, sir, if I may, I think when we come back in the budget workshop, I am gonna present some different ways of kind of the participation so that the town maximizes some of that as well from the big grab. And we've just not incurred that expense, but we actually maximize them to Mr. Fred's point. We make it use some facets of, in the manor as part of those phases for revenue.
And then as we, Ms. Julie, as we go through your budget, this review, in absence of an administrator, who's gonna keep track of the budget amendment, which would need, budget amendment or amendments that would need to be done between now and the end of twenty-four, twenty-five budget year?
I guess the mayor and I will have to be responsible for that.
And we will include as many of you all as possible through that process. It's just not myself and Julie. But we have been meeting more and more on these budgets and going through it fine, too. And I'm proud of Ms. Julie. It is a tough and daunting task, but she's keeping up with us.
And other members of council, is what I'm saying and how I'm saying it, how I'm seeing it, does it make sense or am I missing something?
No. The big grab, you were correct on that.
Yeah, we, every check that was written was written from the town to an agency. We paid Barbara, we paid Richland County. And in fact, I dealt with a little bit with Dylan with Fairfield Chamber. And it becomes so convoluted, we just ended up working with Barbara to do the marketing. So, I would definitely not encourage you to write a check to five grand in Fairfield for the benefit of the town here. I'd keep it internally, yeah, and pay it out of H-Tax.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, ma'am, you may proceed.
And the next line I saw was the equipment line, forty-one, twenty-five, fifty.
Same page.
And it's over by seventeen, four, twenty. We budgeted sixteen thousand dollars is what VC three and I think Asset said would end up being for the computers. But I could not use the iPad that I had. For some reason, I couldn't get any of the iPads to work. So, I had to get a new computer. And that's where this went, cause I can't feasibly put it in office supplies, I just don't think that's the place I need to put it, as far as accounting purposes. All right. Y'all have any questions about the administration? I mean, we can do budget review at the same time that we're going over this, if you want.
Yes, ma'am, so the, how we discussed earlier, and then just hit those high key points that have changed.
Okay, that, that.
And then, any questions that council may have about the budget?
And then I know that y'all will have a, on page, back on page two, the miscellaneous, or is it two? No, it's on four ninety-nine.
It's on page three. It's the line item right before trails.
Oh, yeah. I'm sure y'all will have questions on that, so just, I've got a spreadsheet that I have done.
Which one?
This, it was attached to the reports, it was on the back of the reports, Rich.
Councilwoman Frick.
Oh, gotcha, yes, sir.
And that is my ten, forty-one, twenty, forty, four ninety-nine report. And it breaks it down by Christmas party, fireflies, flags, flowers, um, uniforms, staff appreciation, health and wellness, Santa land.
Ms. Frick, Ms. Frick has the phone, she has some. So, hold on, Councilwoman Frick. Go ahead, ma'am.
So, I know you just, Julie, you just talked about this, um, particular line item, but I wanna go back, and I'm just looking at, um, where did I see the equipment? The software, where am I, didn't I just see? Did I just lose it? The software line item.
Forty-one, fifty, one ninety-two.
Let me ask this.
That's on page four.
Okay, yeah, I got, sorry, I was confused.
Yeah, I wrote the number, it's underneath it and not on top, and I've corrected that when I just saw it. It's forty-five, sixty-six, that's underneath it, on page four.
Okay, right.
Cause the total's right, I put it in the wrong place.
I guess I am just wondering, have, have you had any conversation, or are we in talks at all for any financial software upgrade?
No, I haven't been.
To get rid of QuickBooks?
That, that'd be an, another budget, so I need y'all's input on that. This is like Evolve, I paid Evolve this month, or I will pay Evolve for seventeen thousand dollars. But no, there's, I don't have anything.
For financial software?
Finance, correct.
Is that something that you've considered, or you have, have, uh?
Apparently everyone wants it.
Well, I think it's needed, I mean, cause if, if we had a delay with the budget, uh, cause of an Excel spreadsheet, then that, for me, being a finance person, is even more reason that a governmental finance software would need to be implemented. And I guess that's something that we'll talk about when we actually get into it, because I just think that it will make, I understand, learning a new software, uh, system is not, you know, I, it's not ideal, it's not easy. But I think that it would really help with the whole budgeting process, and once you see it, it's always daunting when you first switch over. But I personally think budget time is the perfect time to switch over to a new software system. It just, it just is.
I sent the mayor a note, a month or so ago, and around, about a budget, a budgeting software. So, and he was gonna set us up with something by Edmund's GovTech.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, not a budgeting software, I mean, there wouldn't be a specifically a budgeting software, it would be a whole financial software that, that would replace QuickBooks, there's, wouldn't be a separate budgeting software. Cause if you buy a software, uh, whatever, it, it's gonna come with the budgeting part to it that pulls.
Which Quick, which QuickBooks does, they have it in there.
Yeah, but to run a town off of QuickBooks is kinda antiquated, I mean, that, I, I'd never heard of it until I came, and I get it, that it's, all I wanna know is, is, is it something that we can talk about? Because I certainly think that it's something that is needed.
Sure.
Yes, ma'am, so, well, I will bring some clarity to this one. Um, you will see this again as part of the new budget. Um, Ms. Julie did send what was suggested or recommended by the association, and some articles, the research, um, and some of the municipalities close to us are using, uh, we will have that piece of the, um, cost increase included into the packet, um, when you guys get it.
And it's just budget software?
No, ma'am, it, it has a lot more components to it.
Right.
Uh, but it handles the whole financials and all of that, so actually, some of those softwares bill into the actual modeling. So I know myself and other members of council that been here for a second, we talked about having like presentation style models, so you could see it, you could see some of this data in real time, uh, so it's a total package, not just budget, yes, ma'am.
I think the term is government finance software. I wanna go back though, real quick, to this amendment discussion that was carrying a minute ago, um, just as clarity there. Uh, minor, um, overages that are within a departmental's or code allocation section, for instance, ten, four, you know, ten, forty-two, forty-one, twenty section. If, if you're over in one line item, uh, the administrator has the authority to pull money within that same budget allocation, uh, area, the ten, forty-one, twenty, uh, to balance that specific without an amendment being needed. So for instance, you've got several lines here that are well below the fifty percent mark, even all the way down at twenty-nine and thirty-nine percent ex, uh, expended. So we could move that to balance these.
Yes.
Uh, overages here.
Yeah, I think what was driving my point was if, between now and the end of the year, we're, we're gonna spend in, like in that category.
Right, the whole thing.
That would throw, yeah.
Yeah, so, right, yeah, so looking at those totals is really where you look for an amendment.
Correct, yes.
That's, okay, I just wanna make sure we are all on the same page there.
And Ms. Julie, the, um, ten, forty-one, fifty, one ninety-three, you're, you're just saying that should be reflected under one ninety-two, is that correct?
That's correct, cause there is no economic development, I'm sorry.
And then, um, did we... Love Bailey's bill was just more than we anticipated.
Yes.
So we can deal with that in the budget workshop for next year.
Right, and I'm gonna raise it, and I'll get with them to see if they're going to, I'm gonna look, cause I'm looking at their engagement letters, and I haven't seen anything that was gonna raise it, so.
Okay. Um, Daniel, when, at the completion of an audit or a review, we do an audit every year, is that correct?
Correct.
At the end of the audit, we, do they write an engagement letter for the next year? Or do they wait until they begin the audit process? The only reason I'm asking is cause we would kinda know what their audit was gonna cost.
Ri- right, it looked to me this past one as they waited.
They waited.
Right. And we already got, I won't say it on record, but.
Yeah.
Already got a discount, been last minute anyway, but it was kinda.
Many times you went back and forth.
Right.
Yeah, that may be, um, I know previous, in previous organizations and nonprofits, when we do yearly audits. At the audit presentation, we go ahead and request the engagement letter for the next year. And then in budgeting, I, I'll bring this up, Mr. Mayor, in the budgeting process as well, I think it, as we grow, it may be wise for us to do, many times we do two years on, one year off with another auditing firm, it does drive the cost of an audit up, but it keeps the same auditor from auditing us for fifteen years, and then problems are found. So, uh, that, that's both for our protection and Love Bailey's, so I'll bring that up during budget workshops.
Yes, sir. All right, any question? Ms. Julie, were you, were you headed, I know we went back, so were you were headed?
Oh, I was just, I think I might've been finished with that page, if y'all have any questions on the, um, administration. The, the forty-one, ninety-nine, um, is why I did this sheet for y'all, for y'all to see the expenses.
Yes, ma'am, so, if.
If you don't mind, before we go to that.
Councilwoman, page you have a.
If we could, before we go to that, GL, if we can finish up the outside funding one. Um, so when I'm looking at the current, um, the one, um, the budget, um, page three for outside funds request, and it states that the actual is fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars, and then the account quick report from, um, July twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-four to, um, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. The total amount is eighteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. So was the rest of the money outside of this date parameter?
It just hasn't been paid yet.
They hadn't been paid, and, and Jordan and I just did all those, I just, because I had done this, cause I knew y'all were questioning, I did this back in February. And we just did these.
Yeah, this is actual.
I understand that, but when you have actual here, and it was stating fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars.
The actual should be that number right there.
Right, so it just hasn't, the checks have been cut.
We're talking about this.
I'm talking about, um.
Reconciling the actual column on page three to this.
Because this is through February thirteenth, this is through February twenty-eighth.
Oh, so, oh, so there's a, there's a two week, two week.
We wrote all those checks to everything.
In the gap time.
And I, I did this prior, cause I knew y'all were asking about all these accounts, and, and I had a minute, and I did them on February thirteenth. All these reports.
Cool.
All right, I got you.
So, and I didn't wanna do them again, but that's why it's different.
I appreciate it, and I'm just trying to make.
But I think I did one of this, no, the Christmas party was done on February thirteenth, so.
And is that normal, when we've allocated these funds to these, um, community groups or agencies to, um, wait until, you know, six months, is that?
The previous town administrator used to do it at, I don't know what time, but he wrote up the request. And so I was saying something to Jordan, Daniel was out, and I, I said, well, that, you know, administrator does it, and she said, well, he's out. And she goes, I'll go ahead and do it, just tell me what to do, so she wrote him up, and I told her the amount.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking from the agencies, the community agencies perspective, is, um, if, you know, these funds were allotted, we've approved a budget, and it could affect their budgeting, I mean, I'm sure they're gracious for anything that is given or whatnot, and I'm just kinda thinking through.
Seven, one would be good to do it.
Got it.
The first day of your fiscal year, it's a good time to do it.
That's what we, thank you, ma'am, that's what we discussed in our, uh, first planning workshop moving forward. When the budget is, um, approved, we're gonna go ahead and get those checks out to those organizations. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, are we done with the administration, or no? Any more questions on the ten, forty-one, twenty, the first, the two, page two and three?
You may proceed, ma'am.
All right, the only thing on the forty-one, fifty was the, I had the software in the wrong place. And that's on page four. But the totals were correct. Public works, I had nothing of interest, if y'all do not. Or inspections and code enforcement on page six. Oil parks and wreck, I don't think I had really many questions. And then we had, I did another spreadsheet for y'all on page nine for the employee bonus retention, new hire, cause y'all were questioning about that too. So it's on one of those spreadsheets, and I put everyone's name, you don't need to say those, um, and the amounts that they received.
All right, Ms. Julie, if you could see.
If y'all have any questions? That was on page nine, Erica.
Yeah.
Ms. Julie, question?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna make sure, I'm looking at your handout correctly.
Oh, you're on the handout.
Okay, so you gave us a handout as it pertains to really two, three line items if you count outside things.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, thank you, sorry, Ms.
Cause I knew y'all would wanna break down of these things, and it's written. All right, and all the other ones, I really don't have anything else to say on, capital campaign, state accommodations, local tax, local accommodations, hospitality tax, and manor capital. Y'all have some questions to.
Any, any questions for?
I mean, like, yeah, we need to get the town usage up and stuff like this when I'm working on the budget, so that's for next year. The rentals for the town usage and the, you know, income.
Yeah, um, that's a, a good segue, so this, this question's actually probably for Mr. Lehman, and you don't have to get up, and, but, on, uh, page one, it shows our budget of two hundred thousand dollars for revenue, currently sits at about a hundred and forty-four thousand, with about four months to go, March, April, May, and June, which, some of your bread and butter months for spring weddings. Do you feel comfortable saying that we're gonna hit that number, go past it, or be under? And if you don't wanna answer, that's okay, cause I don't wanna put you on the spot.
Let me just make sure, I'd say when we reach the two hundred thousand dollar mark on the line first.
June thirtieth, yes.
June thirtieth.
Of this year. Okay, good enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question for Ms. Julie? In the review? Thank you, ma'am, thank you for the.
No problem, and y'all call me anytime, y'all know you can do that.
Um, and, all right, thank you. Um, next executive session item.
No, 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 I don't, I wanna, I wanna talk about these, these three line items that she, that she gave us, let's go.
All righty.
So, um.
I wrote in this one too, didn't I?
So, I guess I will ask you a question, Ms. Julie, so for the Christmas party, it looks like the total, and I'm not, I'm not gonna go add these up, I'm assuming that your, your totals are to the right. Well, seventeen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighteen cents, that's a pretty damn expensive Christmas party. How many people do you think attended the party? Does anybody have an idea of how many people attended the party?
I did not go, I was otherwise disposed.
How many, how many invitations were sent out? And the reason I ask that is because there's a line item on here for a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifteen cents for invitations, yet I know a particular councilman requested the invitations list and was told he couldn't have it. So how can we say we don't have an invitations list, and yet there were invitations sent out to the tune of a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifteen cents? That doesn't matter for me. I, I, I'm, I'd love an answer on that, cause I'd love to know how many people attended the eighteen thousand dollar Christmas party, for staff. Did you get one?
I did not get an invitation, other than sending an email. Well, and actually, I think I heard about the party at one of our meetings, but I didn't have such an invitation. So I don't know what the invitation said, or who it was, you know, from, anything like that.
So what we'll do, we'll pull the receipts in that to you guys in the email.
Well, we, but we have the receipts here, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, this is.
No, I'm talking about the itemized receipt, we have itemized receipts.
Well, this is a breakdown for, I mean, invitation's invitation, but.
No, I said itemized, because I'm not sure if that's just paper card stock that was printed for.
That's paper. That's the paper.
Yeah, and it wasn't like mailed out to people.
Oh, so they were mailed out?
I said not, I said those are more than likely paper that was used for the event. But we can get you itemized, there's no need of going back and forth, we have the itemized receipts, I'm sorry, Ms. Durst.
I didn't mail out anything.
Okay.
Is there, is there a way we can find out who was invited to the Christmas party? Because, and the reason I'm asking is that through budgeting, it was a staff Christmas party. But it was a whole lot more than a staff Christmas party. And that's why I asked, number one, to be familiar with who was gonna be there. And, and, and got, was told that there wasn't a good way to give me the invitation list. So, it, that, that, that's would be my concern, how many people were invited to the eighteen thousand dollar Christmas party? And can we find out who they were? And how many staff actually went to our staff Christmas party?
We can find out staff, um, for me personally, if you wanna know who I sent or who I contacted was, um, our state legislators, those type of people. Um, that I reached out to to say, hey, come out, we having a Christmas party, you know, come think staff, come meet staff, all of that, all of the above. Anytime I'm doing anything or we're doing anything, I wanna make sure that we're reaching out to those partners that we need in our corner. Just to get them out and participating with us.
Do we know how many, um, personnel, staff was at the party by chance? That attended?
We can get that number, we can send out an email and get you that number and who that was. Ms. Durst, can you make a note, we'll send the email to all staff to see who participated, see if the staff also invited guests, um, with them. Any children under the age of? Any children under the age of eighteen, we just wanna make a mark that it was, uh, minor.
It's a busy time of the season.
And I, I was, I, I, I left before, I probably stayed for half of it, I would assume, I don't know what time it ended, but. On, Ms. Julie, on these, I don't see the door prizes or raffle gifts that were given out, do you know if those were charged somewhere else?
No, those were donated goods.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, those were donated goods.
That sounds right, I think we had some last year too.
So, that sounds right.
It's the same, it's the same way they were doing that.
Yeah, it's crazy this year. Okay, um, the next portion of this particular report I'd, I'd like to discuss is Santa Land.
Yes, sir.
Fifty-seven hundred dollars approximately, how many attendees did that generate?
So, let me give you some background on Santa Land and we can get you numbers, cause we have outside numbers of how many photos were taken of kids. So, uh, just for your reference, sir, and others, that was done to support, um, the foster kids in Blackwood. Um, an agency come, um, and wanted to give foster kids in this area a Christmas, um, that they haven't had. So, um, they used the manor, um, for their party, uh, we provided Santa Land to those kids. At the same time, we also opened that, our pilot that to see about getting the public in, so there was public that came through, set schedules. We did use that through social media, um, to get the feel of that during the Christmas holiday. Those kids. Those kids really enjoyed that, um, that event and, um, businesses and, um, other private donors donated Christmas gifts to those kids as well. In Blackwood, yes.
My, my, my only question is, I mean, all that sounds great. And of course, you, you, you've, you've positioned it so that if anybody speaks out about it, we look like we're anti-Christmas or anti-kids.
With anti-foster kids.
I just told the truth.
Okay, well, that's fine, but, but again, I'm looking at the invitation quote unquote, it says Santa Land presented by Mayor Sloan Griffin. But yet, the town council, the town paid for it, so how is it your event that the town paid for? It should've been presented by Blackwood Town Council or the town of Blackwood, I, I just don't understand. And I didn't, we didn't even know about it till it hit social media.
Well, when I actually, if you wanna go back through and look at the tapes, um, when I came through to see the kids and spoke that afternoon. I actually said on behalf of the town of Blackwood Town Council and myself, so.
So, you recorded Santa Land?
No, no, they had a dinner type thing for those kids and the families here at the manor.
So, this was, this was a separate event than the Christmas party, Santa Land was a separate event? Yeah, I had no knowledge of it, um, nor did I receive any communication about it, nor did I see any, um, town administrator minutes. With regards to any events that, um, the town was going to be, um, hosting.
Matter of fact, how much was that, give me a total for that?
For Santa Land?
Give me a total for that.
Yes, sir. Well, it says five, six, seven, two.
Five, six, seven, two.
Always itemized, right here.
Yeah, I just see it. So, five, six, seven, two.
Ms. Julie, I have a question in regards to this particular GL account, is this what is normally spent? This type of items that you've listed out for us, um, the activity report?
In the four ninety-nine?
Yes, ma'am, mhm, under the administrative, is this what we would typically see in previous years?
We've always, well, the uniforms got taken from everyone's account, the buildings, manor and whatever. We all put them in this miscellaneous thing, so everyone's staff shorts or whatever are in that now, and that's been a few years. The flowers, we give to, you know, funerals and such like that. And yes, we've always paid the Christmas party and flags for the grave, the new thing in this line is the health and wellness. Childcare thing is the new thing in this line.
But that was discussed and approved.
Correct.
That was discussed and approved and agreed upon by council.
Correct.
Yep.
So, this money is not separated by a thousand dollars for uniforms or whatever. The only thing that's separated is a sixty-five hundred dollars for the wellness, health and wellness and or childcare per full-time employee. Which is five hundred dollars per person, per full-time.
Okay, and then I don't, mm, does this activity report, I don't know that I see all of staff, um, being allocated those funds for the health and wellness?
They have not submitted it yet and I've, I've sent them emails, go please don't miss out on this opportunity.
Yeah, I think it was structured that they had to submit receipts to be reimbursed.
Receipts, yes, we're not just giving, it's either.
You don't get back.
Uh, daycare or receipt, after-school care receipt, a gym receipt, um, gym attire, gym work, treadmills, whatever.
Okay, so the happy birthday, Thanksgiving, the, um.
That's new.
That is not part of the health and wellness.
No, that's why I got staff appreciation listed to the side, I just put it under a broad category, I did not know what to do.
And then it looks like at this time, well, at least from when this report, this budget report was generated, is, um, we're at twenty-nine thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. Of the thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars that was allocated to this, um, GL. And, um, so it sounds like we're gonna be running over perhaps by the end of that, of, of this fiscal year?
Perhaps, it looks like we spent, when I did this report on the thirteenth of February, that we spent an additional, not, you know. Well, actually it went down, maybe I reallocated twenty-nine four seventy, so, I don't know.
Yeah, that, I, I think that math works out and, and how I looked at that was we approved sixty-five hundred dollars for the health and wellness.
Correct.
But of the health and wellness that you have been receiving to date is twelve twenty-four sixty-nine.
Correct.
If employees turn in receipts for their health and wellness between now and the end of the budget year. We will actually spend against that line item thirty-four thousand seven hundred forty-five dollars and thirty-one cents, and my question is why and how? Well, the answer to that question is Santa Land.
That's one, that's one, that's one thing.
One answer.
Eighteen thousand dollar Christmas party is another.
Part of an eighteen thousand dollar Christmas party is another and part is, which I didn't know about in budgeting. I was unaware that we gave birthday bonuses, Thanksgiving bonuses to full.
From the mayor.
From, again, in our accounting system, from Mayor Griffin to full and part-time people.
Ms. Julie, I have a question, have, prior to this current fiscal year, have you ever received a birthday bonus from the town of Blackwood?
No, sir.
Kirk, well, keep Kirk's going, um, Ronnie, you've been about four years, have you ever received a birthday bonus prior to this fiscal year? Daniel?
No.
Christmas.
Rest of my case.
And then that's, and then the Christmas bonus was paid under.
Oh, that's a separate.
That's a separate.
That's a, that's the last sheet, which.
That's the seventy-one fifty and I broke it out for y'all, ten seventy-one fifty.
Particular GL, if I can ask one question, with regards to the, um, the wonderful Blackwood shirts for staff. And there was like ninety-two of them and for the ones that are paid, you know, people choose to pay for, um, I guess that money will be, you know, credited back to this GL account, is that?
No, we don't, we don't pay for, but this ninety-two shirts for staff was a year's worth of shirts. And it could've been hu, uh, staff shirts for the July fourth event.
So, it's different than the one Jordan, that's, those are different.
Those are marketing.
Correct, Jordan, Jordan's marketing and she's selling.
Those are marketing. Yes.
Or giving away, these are staff shirts.
Okay, gotcha, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Have we already moved on to the next line item, the Christmas bonuses? Are we still?
That's a, yeah, that's a different line item.
Okay, I'll wait.
Are you done? Erica?
I'm.
At this time? Okay, now Andrea.
So, I, I guess my issue, and again.
I was here.
To Councilman Brock's point, I think if we bring some of this up, then we look like the Christmas Grinch. But I guess, I would've liked to have been included in the Christmas bonuses, I mean, to this day, nobody on council has even been told that we gave Christmas bonuses. Now, we know because of the numbers, but I guess that was a, from Mayor Griffin, uh, Christmas bonus too. So, I think that what, what it appears is, is you'd kinda arbitrarily pick the amount and you give and it's from you. I know, I, I, it's not so much that I have a problem with the idea of a bonus, cause again, if I said otherwise, then it makes me look like the Christmas Grinch. I'm not. But everything is from the mayor, it is as though the council does not even exist. And, and it kinda leads me back to the communication part, it's, it's portrayed as though we don't pick up the phone and call. But I think an email to say, hey, you know, what do you think about Christmas bonuses? Or better yet, if that's part of the strong mayor, then, hey, I'm giving Christmas bonuses. And, you know, I, I mean, but to, like I said, to this day, we've not even been told that they were given. That's, so, hey, if the staff is gonna be excited about Christmas bonuses, can it be from the mayor and council? Everything is from the mayor and council is not even made aware that any of this is happening. That's my issue, it's not so much that it's being done, it's that everything is about the mayor, it's the Sloan Griffin show. And the council doesn't exist. You may.
Yes, sir, Mr., what, Mr. Ronnie?
I'm not speaking for everybody that works for the town, but when this is given, me myself, I think it's from all of y'all, not just the mayor. That's just me personally.
Sure.
I mean.
Yeah, it would be nice if we even knew that it was given.
Yes, and I agree, I, I agree a hundred percent.
If, if you would've thanked me for your Christmas bonuses, I would've looked at you like I had no.
I, and I understand that now, I mean, I did not know that.
And I appreciate you saying that, that you just.
Cause I think all of y'all as a group is our future of this town.
Thank you. Correct.
And y'all, you know, that's just my take on it.
Thank you.
And Ms. Julie, on the, on that same line item, ten seventy-one fifty-one hundred. Um, there was, nothing budgeted there, is, but is that?
That's the bigger problem here.
That, that, that is, yeah.
That is, that is, that is the, that's the red flag that's being wasted, because there were funds that were expended, that were never appropriated by council. That's a problem.
And then, just my notes before we leave you, because you're a wealth of knowledge. Do you know, first of all, were there expenses incurred for the mayor's mayor for a day event that again, council knew nothing about? But did, were there expenses incurred for that and if so, where were they charged in the budget, how much were they?
I put it in marketing and then was told to put it somewhere else in the governing body. So, it must be under other expenses, travel training, and I can look that up.
So, but it's not reflected in the marketing budget right now?
Correct.
And where, where is it reflected, do you think?
I think it's in other expenses, travel training, under governing body, which is on page two.
Well, that would be a, that would clearly be, in, at least my opinion, a misclassification of an expense.
You were told to move it from marketing to where?
Governing body, other expenses, ten four one one zero three ten.
On page two, like the fifth, sixth line, sixth i, line item down. Marketing doesn't sound necessarily wrong.
Marketing's not right.
No. I don't have a problem with that, how, how much was spent on that?
I have no idea.
She thinks it's in somewhere.
Ms. Julie, give everybody a breakdown of that too as well.
Um, I'm looking right now, under, pulling up that account. I'm not seeing it under that number. I don't know where else it would be, oh, miscellaneous, let me try that.
Brock, I'm missing that line item.
Yeah, I don't see it.
Page two? Yeah, it's the sixth one down.
It might be, um, miscellaneous, it makes more sense.
Other expenses slash travel slash training.
What?
Forty-one, ten, that's three ten.
You're really going to do that?
You're on page two.
Yeah, right, 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 yeah, I don't even think that would be the right line item.
Governing body. I'm looking.
I don't necessarily have a problem with it, but I certainly don't think that's where the line item, that it should be coded.
Okay, it's under miscellaneous, it's.
We're split hairs on that, but I mean, you could, you could claim it as one, I mean, you could claim it as other, I mean.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Well, it was an unallocated expense, so I just asked for clarity.
Right.
I noticed it when Jordan's budget was nearly exhausted and I asked, well, how, and I went and asked Jordan, I said, what have you spent? And she said, this, this and this, and said, it's not adding up. So, then I finally run it down to find that the mayor for a day had been allocated to there. So, I said, it can't be there, Jordan has X, Y and Z to still do. So, I s, I said, at least put it in governing body, we'll figure it out later, because there was nowhere to really put it.
I mean, I, I, I don't think that's, there's only been, yeah, there's only been thirty-nine hundred dollars spent there.
Yeah.
It's in miscellaneous, is where it is.
Oh.
Four one one zero two ninety, miscellaneous. Cause it's miscellaneous.
So, it's in the fifty-three twenty-seventh line?
Correct.
And do we know how much it was?
And it's in there.
The mayor said he, she would give a breakdown.
Ask for Ms. Julie to give y'all a breakdown, to email that to y'all with the breakdown of the receipts, the itemized breakdown.
And, and I mean, I, I'll just make the point too that. Yep. As a member of council, I would've liked to have known that in. As a member of council, I would have liked to have known that event was going on, to see who our mayor for the day. I know it was a, you know, elementary school student, that's all I know. I don't know what day it was, I don't know anything about it. Would have been nice to know. As well as giving the key to the town away. It would have been nice to know for council that the mayor is giving the key to the town away at a town event. That's a big deal, at least in my opinion.
So if we discuss those...
Can we get, sorry, what did you, whatever pieces that you need, man?
I'm gonna email it to him right now.
All right.
I'm, 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 I still would, and maybe Mr. Sands or even Mr. Balthazar could, could help us out on this. How did, how did eighty-two hundred and fifty dollars get expended for Christmas bonuses when it was never appropriated and approved by council? That, that's, that's the biggest takeaway, in my opinion, for tonight. We went to court over something like this. And so, I, I'm trying to figure out how this happened. 'Cause on page nine, I see a line item, I don't see any money budgeted for it, but I see money spent. So I would like an answer by the next budget meeting.
Wanted to, because it's been mentioned a couple of times today, and, um, and again, I, I don't know, I like parties, and so if there's a party, or if there's something to support in the town, and I've mentioned this with, directly with the mayor before, and if there is something going on, and there's an opportunity to be supportive of it, I would like to be able to do so if I'm available. But, um, I'm looking at the, um, page three of the budget that you provided this evening, and, um, I am looking at the GL number, I'm sorry, my eyes are getting really fast right now, but it's, um, ten dash forty-one twenty dash three seventy-five outside, um... Actually, no, I'm not doing that one, sorry. We need to go all the way to the back. It's where... Okay, yep. Here we go, um...
What page?
It is page thirteen.
Okay.
Okay, and it's, um, the town events. And actually, I will, let me make sure. Yeah, okay, great, yep. All right, so town events, um, GL number, is that?
Three seven three.
Is that two three five one one zero dash three seven three, and, um, as of, again, here today, at the end of February, we're at fifty-five thousand five hundred and forty dollars. And, um, I am looking at the breakdown of the GL, the itemization for the GL, and I am not seeing anything here for the June team. Um, that was supposed to be allocated twenty-five thousand dollars?
It's not happening yet.
Okay, and the, the breakdown that I asked for, the allocation that I asked for was from April of twenty twenty-four, all the way to March of twenty, well, what was provided was April of twenty twenty-four to March of twenty twenty-five. And from what I understand, that there was a June team last...
And that was funded under the ten forty-one twenty-three seventy-five last fiscal year. So y'all keep moving these things on me, and it's very hard to keep track, so it was under, that's why we went over fif- in that number.
Yeah, okay, perfect, because, yeah, and that's where I'm thinking the event happened, and then it gets paid, and it doesn't get paid until July or whatnot, so that's where I'm trying to fix that.
'Cause the event's June nineteenth, and they take like thirty days or more to get their receipts and everything, and get the report.
But even if you, we close, it, but when June thirty comes, and we're closing out the year, we got outstanding invoices from, let's say, June teen, then by the time you reconcile and close out the ye- the, the, um, year end, you can still pay those invoices and apply them to...
We're on a cash base, we're on a cash basis, so if I pay them in July or August for fiscal year twenty-four, it's going in July and August. Our CPA at the end of the year goes...
We don't do journal entries? The CPA doesn't do like journal entries to bring...
The CPA does a journal entry, he does stuff on a accrual basis, and that's where all the stuff in the audit comes from.
I, I, let me, let me help, let me help y'all, help, help the newcomers out real quick. So, the way that we traditionally funded events was as follows. And Councilman Kendrick and I worked on a pretty, I think, easy-to-follow policy, and y'all probably haven't seen it, and, and that's, that's a fault of ours, I'll follow the sword on this.
Okay, so tell me.
So, you have an, an applicant pool of people who want to come and request dollars from said pool. And then, it traditionally was this body, and I haven't seen a single, single application, the, the applications even go out this year, I don't know. But they would apply, and then we would get a packet of applications, they'd say, we want to run this event, and this is how much money we want. If the event was approved, and Councilman Kendrick, correct me if I'm wrong, we would pay eighty percent of the requested amount, approximately ninety days prior to the event. Upon completion of the event, and approval and reconciliation by the town manager, they could re- they could request their additional twenty percent, um, and it falls sometime after the event.
Up to seventy-five hundred off.
Yeah. So, so that's why you see the twenty percent for June eighteen for fiscal year twenty-four show up as fiscal year twenty-five, because they got the eighty percent prior to the event. Now, there's an easy fix for this. Well, there's actually two easy fixes. One, you don't give anybody any money, and then that makes it very easy. Or two, you can fully fund the event, a hundred percent upfront. The problem with that is that somebody could literally take your money and run, but they could only do it one time.
So, a- so again, well, you can pay the eighty percent, and then you can, for me, I'm just thinking about June thirty, and I'm thinking about QuickBooks, and the, and so, I guess I'm just thinking, if it was different software, you could pay them after. And, a- and that's what the, uh, what the accountant would do, the auditor...
Well, yeah, when they, when they reconcile the financial statements, they, they do reconciling entries, yeah, try to move money from current to prior fiscal year.
Do the rec- right.
Right, exactly. Right.
Yeah. They might work in a fiscal month thirteen and reconcile, then carry your balances forward to the new fiscal month one, yeah.
Correct.
Correct.
Is that not what's happening? So, look, forgive me, Julie, so is that, so in QuickBooks, does it not allow us to do that?
We could be on a accrual basis, but we're on a cash basis.
You could always request that all, you, you, you could, uh, put as part of a condition of receiving the twenty percent, is that you have to have your receipts and everything reconciled by the end of the fiscal year.
I, I, I think I like that. If we're gonna stick with, put, I think I like that until we make a change, but that's something that can be...
We could do that. We could do that. And, and, Councilwoman Frick, we all, we also made it easier on the applicants by saying that they don't have to provide a full reconciliation of revenues and expenses, only the expenses that qualify for the, uh, for the, for the grant.
For the grant.
So, we actually made it easy, so honestly, if, and, and there's a nice laundry list of qualifying expenses in, um, state statute, if they have more than those that exceed what they're receiving, then it's very easy just to submit those receipts, even if they're, even if they're not necessarily paid. If Ri- if you owe Richland County thirty thousand dollars for security, and you've got a twenty-five thousand dollar grant, security is, is under the, uh, accommodations provision in state statute. Title four, I think, I'm like, I don't remember off the top of my head, I could find it, but, yeah, I mean, we can, we can, we can amend that policy and make it very easy for people to, to comply with the cash basis, um, accounting procedures.
Would that make it easier for you, Julie?
Make it cleaner.
It would be.
I mean, Shane does all these things at the end of the year.
'Cause he's doing the, I'm sorry.
He does all the journal entries, he, he does accrual, I have to do reports for the manor, I have to look up the manor to see when their events are, if the money was taken, and for what fiscal year it needs to go into. And Shane does all these reports and moves them all.
'Cause he's doing the adjustment, but to Councilman Brock, Mayor for Tim Brock, he's saying that if there is a way to have them paid so that that wouldn't need to be done, and it would just be cleaner.
He would just clean up this document, is all, what he's still gonna have to do is reconciling entries anyways, for other things, it's not just this one portion of the budget.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah, he would certainly would have to, yeah.
Interesting.
Okay. So, um, part of the workshop, it looks like we need to bring that, um, policy back up, so we'll make a note of that, Pete, that we'll bring that policy back up, so if you don't mind, start an email with, uh, members of council, um, just giving them notice that we're gonna do that, and the actual, um, two-party committee that worked on that, send that back to them, um, and we'll let them do that, just in the email.
And I haven't seen any of the H-Tacs or any of the applications to know what's going on for the budget, coming up budget.
Yeah, that was gonna be my follow-up, Mr. Mayor, shall we find out where we are on, I guess we'll see it when that policy goes out, on the application process, and then can we at the same time revisit Fred's manor fee structure?
So, said, yes, so we got the note, so part of the twenty-seventh, we're gonna go through those applications, um, and then we'll put Fred's fee piece in that, so, so that budget workshop's gonna be heavy, that first one, but we're gonna get this done, so, um...
And then can, can we, um...
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, can we get, so we have it for that budget workshop at Art Delay, can we get the... The more concerning piece of the ten seventy-one fifty one hundred, can we get, Pete, can you speak to that? It, I don't know if it's as easy as moving it, maybe it is. Primarily, that is the bonuses, Christmas bonuses. Um, and then, does it matter, I mean, we're gonna be, at, at best, we're gonna be as an interim administrator for the budget workshop, or higher-end administrator, but they're not gonna be up to speed on what we're looking at. I'm just worried about the gaps that are gonna be created. Do, Ms. Julie, was that an automatic assignment, or who directed the eighty-two fifty to be put in ten seventy-one fifty one hundred?
That was the payroll service, because when we had last got a bonus, this line was created with the ARP money. And when the employees were given a bonus at that time with those funds, that was when that line was created, and hadn't been used since, well, no...
Were the bonuses taxed?
Pardon?
Were the bonuses taxed?
Yes. And so when I told payroll to do this, that's where, because in, in prior years, the bonuses had come from that line.
All monies received by staff should be taxed during, at a minimum, two ninety-nine.
I mean, I, I didn't know.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
All the happy birthdays, the Thanksgivings, all that stuff.
Does that matter? Does it matter? No, 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 I'm not talking about tax. I'm talking about the fact that, so, Ms. Julie, help me. We pay a employee a bonus, that gets entered into payroll.
Correct.
And payroll goes by department, or you submit payroll?
Department.
Each department submits their own payroll?
Say that again.
Each department submits their own payroll?
No, I submit it.
You, you submit?
Yeah.
So then, the payroll service sends us back, obviously, check stubs.
Right.
I don't know what payroll service we use, but I've used many over the years, and then they send you back the reconciliation to what account they hit?
They automatically put it in QuickBooks. They, they can get on my QuickBooks anytime and help me if I need help.
So what is the, I don't want to get in the weeds, Mayor, but what is, obviously, if we migrate away from QuickBooks, it'll help, but what is the safety net to keep a vendor that pays our employees, that has access to our QuickBooks from misassigning very much like this? I mean, we didn't budget any money here, and, and they're paying money out of it.
Well, I, I think moving to another software platform, uh, financial, um, software platform, uh, would probably answer and solve that, um, this is something that, that, that we as a body will have to fix, as something that, you know, obviously being in place where they have access to, um, that type of a file, so we can fix that, uh, moving forward with the right, um, program in place.
So I think for the first budget workshop, it may be helpful, Mr. Mayor, if staff, I, I, I'm assuming it, it would be you and Ms. Julie, where is the right place for that to be charged, and then what will that do to that line item where you correctly...
Let's get with Shane.
I, I think it needs to be in the one eighty line, in the salary line of everybody. No, you don't.
I don't.
But on the line, your payroll would say bonus.
Yeah, I, I think there would have to be a line item in the budget, employee bonuses.
Well, that's that right there.
We have an important, no, but there was nothing, that's my point, there was nothing budgeted.
Right.
So if we have a window to get this thing corrected, I want to take advantage of the window, but I would, it's in... It's not salary, because salaries, there's a salary package for each employee.
It's not earned income.
Yeah, it's not earned, and a salary is an earned income.
Anyway, I...
So, yeah, let's, let's, we'll work with this CPA, we'll work with Shane, let's get with Mayor Minus.
So y'all want this to be zero?
That needs, uh, yeah.
I think that, I think the only thing you can go into is the salary there.
We'll, we'll get you...
At this point.
We'll work on that tomorrow, we'll get with Shane, and then get you something back on that tomorrow.
Are you speaking of council or Ms. Julie, something back?
No, I'm speaking to Ca- Ms. Julie, I'm sorry.
Okay, can we, um, at least I would like to be included on this one, so we don't get with an accountant, figure out where we want to move this, and then budget workshop, council says, where was this money moved, and I tell you, and we're moving it again.
No, that's what I'm saying, tomorrow, this is what's gonna happen, tomorrow, Julie's gonna make that phone call. Julie's gonna send that email out to let you guys know what that conversation between Shane and...
Yeah, I'm just trying to save that, move it here, move it there.
Yeah, so... No, no, you're gonna get, you're gonna get where his recommendation is to, to put that, not staff recommendation, you're gonna get his, and then, uh, we can make that decision as a body, uh...
And, and, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm with you a hundred percent, and I don't want this to come across wrong, not trying to pick a fight. But while we decide where to move eighty-two hundred and fifty dollars as a body, we did not decide as a body to spend it. But yet, for our, our upcoming audit, we're, we're gonna decide as a body how to correct it. Do, do you see the, do you see the tension there?
We're, we're, we're working as a team, and that's it, so we're, we're good moving forward. So, we're gonna get those emails to you. Pete has his piece, um, I'll look at that, get that policy emailed, um, back out, the, um, H-Tacs, that H-Tacs policy piece. Send that whole policy, I'm sorry, who spoke?
I, I hope I can find it, Mr. Mayor, I mean, that wasn't, that wasn't really my policy.
I know, but, I just...
I know I looked at it, I mean, I know I've seen it, but I, but I don't, I'm not sure if I can get my hands on it.
It's in the, I want legal to be part of that, that email.
Between Brock and myself, we can find it, we can get it to Pete.
Appreciate you, yeah, so they'll get it to you, I just want you to be part of that from a legal standpoint, and, and have eyes on that and monitor that through the process.
Absol- absolutely, un- understood.
And I just want to be clear about this year's applications that was mentioned earlier, is it related... And I just wanna be clear about this year's applications that was mentioned earlier, as it relates to this funding. If council as a whole recalls, last year, this line, ten forty-one twenty-three seventy-five, used to be referred to as community impact grants. That, that, this was adopted as outside fund requests, and it was set to have specific amounts to distribute throughout the community. So we did not take applications like you historically had in the previous years, however, we did do applications for SAT, and Jordan administers those. So I just wanna be clear, if there's wonderings of why we don't have any, that's how that was done this past budget improved, so for future discussions, I don't want there to be more confusion.
Those were, um, and when we get to the budget, we'll definitely explain all of that back to council again, because we do have, uh, new members from when that was originally created. Okay, yes, sir, Councilwoman Kim.
I, I don't, I'm sorry.
So.
Mr. Mayor, get, and Brock, you can speak to this as well, but if we're, if we've deviated from the policy.
Yes.
Which I, to some degree, I think we did last year, because we didn't go through the process. Is it worthy of sending that policy out if we're not following the policy? Because applications haven't went out? Nonprofits aren't applying?
It would, it would just seem that, would seem to be prudent to get a copy of the policy and just do a quick review before the applications go out, that'd be easy. And if there's any need to make a change, then we could, we could vote on the change, it requires a vote.
But, so, and we, what we'll do too, we do have some of those applications, uh, we'll send the raw applications out to you. So, when you get, just send the raw applications out to all council. Yes, ma'am. Yes, just email the raw application data to all members of council. That's gonna be part of our discussion on the twenty-seventh, so you may see that again in your final packet. Thank you, ma'am.
Jordan, there would also be, um, there would prob- there might also be some accommodations as well. I don't know if anybody's applied for accommodations, but they could. Speaking of accommodations, has the ATAX committee met in the recent past?
Yeah, we, we met last year for last year's SAT, um, recommendations, and then Jordan, if I understand, I think she has been actively working to schedule this year's. And I think you're pretty close to that, are we not?
Yeah, I've, I've emailed them, um, I need to call up to actually send a date, date of not going back to me. And, but we do have the applications and for the S A T, we need to set up anything.
Yeah, we, we announce and send out applications in January, there's a application period, we get those internally. And then we set up the meetings with the ATAX committee, and then we bring it, you know, to Ford. This year's gonna be a little different, for instance, like, uh, Experience Columbia doesn't appear, maybe they're gonna be one of the applicants this year for various, for whatever reason. So anyway, we, they're done, they're being scheduled, and it's about the same timeline we were on last year trying to get this committee together.
So the ATAX committee only reviews ATAX applications, hospitality tax applications come directly to this council?
I think that's the way you historically had it, had before, right, yeah, the, the community impact, yeah, the community impact grant was set up that way as well, I think.
I don't even know what that is, but okay.
Well, that was what you were doing before these allegations.
That was just taking money out of the general fund and just giving it to whoever they wanted to.
Right.
That's what that was, that was the slush fund. Yeah, I don't really like that.
Alrighty, um, I think everybody has their directives, um, moving forward for tomorrow, uh, we'll work swiftly to get those things out to you all. Any other questions for Ms. Julie? Alrighty, hearing none. Again, ma'am, thank you. Alright, at this time, if it be the will of the council, we'll move to item three, executive session. Prudent to South Carolina Code thirty dash four dash seventy, discussion of employment, uh, appointment in compensation of an interim town administrator and consultant for professional executive search, discussion and negotiations. Incident to propose contractual agreements for same receipt of legal advice related to same or other matters covered by attorney-client privilege. I'll be looking for a motion to move the executive session.
So moved.
Motion made, and seconded any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays, ayes have it, we'll move with a five-minute recess. Any nays, ayes have it, we'll move with a five-minute recess. Alright, I'll be looking for a motion to reconvene from executive session.
So moved.
It's made, motion made and seconded any discussion. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays, ayes have it. Council, were there any items requiring a vote following executive session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I would move to approve the consulting services agreement between the town of Blackwood and Parker Poe Consulting LLC, also known as the consultant in the agreement, as presented by the consultant and with the changes to the agreement and the exhibits as discussed in executive session this evening.
Yes, sir, motion being made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays, ayes have it, thank you. Alright, at this time, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion. Hearing no discussion.